Can we all stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaGranne. Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias is absent today. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slate?
Present.
Dr. Fogg?
Present.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
President Baker?
Here.
We have a quorum with eight.
Can I get a motion for an approval of the agenda?
To move?
Support.
If I say aye?
Aye.
Alright. Celebrations.
I would like to ask Dr. Baker first if Kurt Johnson, I feel like my mic is not on. Kurt Johnson, if you will come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kurt's mic is on.
My mic is on. I love using that elementary recessed voice whenever I get a chance to. But good evening, President Dr. Baker, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, and our other distinguished board members. It is a pleasure to be with you once again to share on the celebration portion of the agenda for this meeting. You know, we have really worked to improve and we're trying to perfect what we deliver in our extracurricular programming. We still have some lofty goals and a long way to reach our goals, but we are experiencing some successes along the way. And we'd like to share those with you intermittently as the seasons end and we are able to allow you to share in what has taken place there. We are really benefiting from the Transformation Plan that allowed us to kind of reconfigure how we do programming, and it has allowed us to elevate the level of play of many of our student athletes. We have seen numerous individual student athletes and teams participate in postseason play, continuing their competitions after the regular season has ended at the district level, the regional level, the state level, and even in some cases, the national level. And that really speaks to how the competitiveness of our students is increasing. We have seen records in all of the schools fall that had stood for decades, 10, 20, 30, 40 years or more, which shows that our kids are doing great things at this time in our history. So, without any further ado, I want to bring forward the high school athletic directors, Mr. Marcus Harris from Ottawa Hills and Justin Walker from Union High School to share in some of the celebrations. And we have many of them on there, but we're going to zoom through them and summarize them and give you a chance to meet and greet the athletes as they leave.
Good evening, President Baker, Superintendent Neal, and the rest of our distinguished board members. Thank you for allowing me to come here today to share some of the great joys that we have had during the winter season at Union High School. Like Mr. Johnson said, we have had a number of student athletes represent our district well, and in that representing of our district, they were able to earn some accolades along the way. The first one being for our boys swim, Sudavis Tannenboll and Ian Waszowski were both named first team All-Conference in the OK Conference Rainbow Tier III. And then also, the boys' swim team set a new 200-meter free relay record this past winter. And both Ian and Sudavis were a part of that relay team, along with Andy Zink and Eric Waszowski, who were also a part of that relay team. So, they took down their record that stood for quite some time, like Mr. Johnson said. So, that was great to see. And also with our hockey team this year, we had three All-Conference athletes in the sport of hockey. That is the first time we have had multiple All-Conference athletes in hockey in quite some time. Those athletes were Quentin Gerke, Alex Montieth, and Ian Sword. So, those athletes represented our district very well in the sport of hockey. Moving on to competitive cheer, we had two All-Conference competitive cheer. I know Superintendent Neal will be happy to hear that. But All-Conference cheer was Rebecca Barajas and Zoe Boltman. And that is the first time Union has had multiple All-Conference cheerleaders as well. So, Coach Harrison is doing a great job with that program, and I'm expecting even more All-Conference athletes for competitive cheer next year, and I'm looking forward to that. Boys' basketball, we had one All-Conference athlete in Daquavion Stuckey. He made first team. And Kedron Davis, he made All-Conference Honorable Mention for boys' basketball. And lastly, we have our girls' basketball program. They made tremendous strides this year. They finished with an overall record of 11-9, which is the best record they have had since we have joined the OK Conference. And they were led by two outstanding seniors who both will be playing college basketball next year. Tyra Williams will be attending Sienna Heights, and she was an All-Conference athlete, and she reached a career milestone this year in scoring over 1,000 points in her career. And kind of put that in perspective, 20 games a season. So, some games, she put the ball in the basket a lot, and that's just a testament to her hard work over the years. And Patriella Winnington, who is also a senior this year, will be attending Whittier College out in California, and she will be playing basketball, and she was an All-Conference Honorable Mention athlete. We also had two other seniors on that team that did not make All-Conference but still were great contributors to this program, and they will be attending college next year as well. Muslina Sheik will be attending Grand Valley State University, and Cheryl Barazza will be attending Wayne State. The last thing about that girls' basketball program, their starting five GPA combined was over 3.5. So, not only did they get it done on the court, but they got it done. Again, we had a great winter season at Union High School. I look forward to the spring. It's already off to a great start. I encourage you all to come out to a baseball, soccer, or softball match or tennis when you get a chance. And I will turn it over to Marcus Hills, the Athletic Director at Ottawa Hills.
Good evening, President Dr. Baker, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, and other distinguished board members. Thank you for having us. Again, I'm Marcus Harris, Ottawa Hills Athletic Director, and I am here to as well talk about our winter sports season and our summary of some of the good things we've done at Ottawa Hills and accomplishments during the winter sports season. First, I'm going to start off with our boys' swim program, which over the years, Coach Eve Julian has done a tremendous job over the years with our boy swim program, as you can be aware. She's been here several times for our boys' swim program. Overall, again, we had a winning record, 5-2 overall record for our swimming. We had four All-Conference selections this year. We're in the same tier as Union, Tier III, which was Robert Paul, Michael Paul, Jack Cope, and A.J. Oliver. Robert Paul was a state qualifier for Division II State Finals in the 50 Free, the 100 Free, and the 200 Medley Relay and 200 Free Relay. Michael Paul, his twin brother, also was a state qualifier for Division II for the 100 Fly, 200 Medley Relay, and 200 Free Relay. A.J. Oliver, who's a Southmore, also was a state qualifier in the 100 Breaststroke, the 200 Medley Relay, and the 200 Free Relay. And also, last but not least, a senior, Jack Cope, was part of the 200 Meter Relay and the 200 Free Relay for the State Finals. Also, along these four guys broke several records this year. Robert Paul broke the 50 Free Ottawa Hills school record and the Rainbow Conference record, and also the Hastings Pool record, which we annually hold our OK Conference meets. A.J. Oliver broke the 100 Breaststroke Rainbow Conference meet and also the Hastings Pool record. And Robert Paul, Michael Paul, and A.J. and Jack Cope also broke the 200 Free Relay Rainbow Conference meet. Also, we have two academic All-Americans on our swim team, which was Michael Paul and Robert Paul, with a 3.86 GPA and also a 3.95 GPA. And also, our Ottawa Hills Boys Basketball Team had a pretty good season this year, coached under Coach Van Mayfield. They continue to strive, like Kurt Johnson said, in the postseason as well. This year, we had three All-Conference selections with Lance Wyndham Clayton, Anthony McIntosh, and Ohani Ichibaria. And also, we had one Honorable Mention athlete as well with James Beck. The boys' basketball team had an overall record of 20-4 and also 9-1 in the conference, which gave them the OK Gold Conference Championship. Also this year, they were district championships, which was back-to-back, back-to-back regional finals, semifinal appearances. And also, this was the third district championship in four years under Coach Van Mayfield for the Ottawa Hills Boys Basketball Program. This season as well, the boys' freshman JV and varsity teams all won the OK Gold Championship this year. Lance Wyndham Clayton, which is a senior, was selected to the Grand Rapids Press M-Live Area Dream Team First Team, which is only one of five members on that team in this area. He averaged 18 points and shot 46 percent from the three-point range after shooting over 200 three-pointers over the season. So, the boys' basketball team continues to strive, make postseason appearances, and hopefully, we can reach that next step in regionals next year. Also, the girls' basketball program, which is coached under Pat Charity, is moving along and continuing good progress, not only on the court but off the court as well, where we have several girls who got a 4.0 GPA after the third marking period.
That's nice.
Brooklyn Bowman. Brooklyn Bowman is a freshman at Ottawa Hills on the JV Basketball Team. Mariana McGowan is a freshman on the Ottawa Hills Freshmen Girls Basketball Team. Alexis Baskin is a junior at U-Prep on the Varsity Basketball Team. Her sister, China Figures, is a Southmore at U-Prep on the JV Basketball Team. Kennedy Lewis is a freshman at Ottawa Hills on the JV Basketball Team. And Diamond Phillips, who's a freshman on the Varsity Ottawa Hills Basketball Team. All of these girls reached perfection after the third marking period, getting a 4.0 GPA. So again, thank you, President Dr. Baker, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, and other board members, and also thanks to our coaches for doing a tremendous job. And last but not least, thank you to all the parents who are with us today and helping these student athletes strive to be the best they can be. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
One of the things that we try to pay particular attention to is our lower-level developments, because that sets the momentum for some of the high school performances. And you know, we have an interesting configuration in our district in terms of the number of programs we have, the type of programs we have, and some of the challenges or, let's see, I would say, yeah, challenges that we have in terms of making it all work, with a lot of dismissal times, geographical locations, and facilities and whatnot. But we come together under the leadership of our superintendent and figure out how to make it happen for the students and the parents there. We've had one person in our midst who has been recognized by his peers in the state of Michigan. The Michigan Athletic Administration Association has recognized Dan Covey as the Middle School Athletic Director of the Year. They are recognizing the work that he is doing over at CA Frost, which is a tremendous job in terms of getting those programs up and running and keeping them going in the best interest of students in the school and the parents in the community. So, we would like to also recognize him. There are several accomplishments that are going on in middle school as well as elementary, and we've kind of summarized them in the interest of time in your package there, so you can kind of read through them. But at some later point in time, we would like to also showcase some of our elementary and middle school students in terms of what they're doing and the momentum that we want them to bring to the high schools and continue this level of development. So again, we would like to thank our leadership of our superintendent. You all, as board members, are a big part of why this happens, the way it is. You know, you set the tone, you set the expectations, and we try to carve out and deliver on those expectations, because you have your minds and thoughts and desires and hearts set on students and students doing well. And so, we go out and try to do that grunt work for you and represent the district well. So, we want to thank you as well, along with the parents as well as the schools. Thank you.
Thanks.
To keep it moving.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to send them around the circle and then out the door.
Swimming coach.
Hi, congratulations.
What's your student, you know?
Hi.
Alright.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Way to represent.
Congratulations.
One who did all the work.
Oh, you're the coach. I saw you after.
Good to see you.
Congratulations. Oh, you're the coach. Coach, alright.
Throw your hair back after the shake.
Swimmer. Swim's tough.
It's amazing. There's such a strong connection between sports and academics, you know? The discipline piece.
Thank you.
I know I wrestled in Central High School.
Thank you.
Coach Kevin's team there, all of Reverend Dean. He likes to say he taught me everything I know about wrestling.
Alright, moving on. Should have the rest of the people move forward.
No sports, no running, run a marathon or anything.
Student representatives, would you like to go ahead?
Sure thing. So, on March 2nd, when we had the City High Forensics and Debate Team here, everyone was really approving of the good work that they've been doing. And everyone noted that, you know, it would be a great thing if we could expand this program to other schools in GRPS, which is something that Mr. Gorman, Mr. Harris, U-Prep, and Central have been working on. And I had the awesome opportunity last Friday to talk to Mr. Gorman about what would be some good things we could do to get these programs kicked off. And so, I was really happy to have that opportunity. I'm really happy that our schools are maybe going to have the opportunity to expand this program. And I would like to, after the board meeting, if it would be okay with everyone, if I could just hand out just a small report on what I think would be great for us to do going forward.
Community organizer.
Okay. Hey, is it working? Okay. A little disappointed all my peers left. Had a little inspirational speech about how senioritis is real. I thought it was a myth, but no, it's real. I find myself procrastinating a lot, but it's end of school year, so I'm trying to wrap it up and do good. Actually, I think at my school where all seniors that were in auditorium, everybody raised their hand, show if they've been accepted to colleges, and I was just surprised the number of hands I was raised. And it's just due to all the great teachers that's been going on at our schools and hiring, and I just appreciate the board and how you guys hire teachers, you know? My principal's really great, and I know how he is and his expectations, and he's always on me. He's always on me. So, if I'm late or if I turn in some late, it's actually kind of weird, because he knows about it, so I'm late. So, yeah, that's it.
Alright, great. Thanks a lot. So, moving on. Superintendent's report.
I would like to ask, I'm not sure, Rick, Rick, and Matthew, if you can come forward, please.
I'm sorry. I jumped over you. Okay. Skip in order a little bit. Sorry about that.
We'll go back.
Okay. Superintendent Neal, President Baker, and members of the board. I'm happy to report tonight on an initiative between GRPS's preschool program and PNC Bank. To start off, they say that a picture's worth a thousand words. I'd like to start with a video worth a million. Julie, if you can get the lights. So, as you can see from that video, we've got a really nice initiative launch that started at one school, Dickinson, two years ago with me as the teacher. And now, it's grown to over five schools and more coming online every day. So, I'd like to introduce Shawn Walsh, the Regional Bank President for PNC.
Yeah. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us here tonight. I was just thinking, I'm usually a little more nervous when I'm testifying in front of an elected body, but this is a great night.
Be kind.
It was the music, right?
We started a number of years ago, approximately 10 years ago, a program at PNC where we determined the greatest impact that we can make with our philanthropic dollars is to invest in the development of early childhood. And for the first 10 years, we invested $100 million. We've now recommitted for the next 10 years, and we committed to $250 million for the next 10 years. And we do this throughout our region, throughout our states that we operate. And we started here in Grand Rapids, as Matthew said, about two years ago. And I look at those pictures and it makes me very happy to see it, because A, I know the kids are getting an impact. But the selfish part of me is, our employees love that. And they are having a great time, and it's helping us create a work atmosphere that they were proud of where they work. So, as we go forward, our Grow Up Great for Grant Hours, just to give you a little synopsis of it, we pay 40 hours of volunteer time for our employees during work hours. And if they volunteer at one of these GRPS Early Childhood Programs, which we're going to hear about tonight, and they hit that 40 hours during work hours, we'll donate on their behalf $1,000 to the school. So, my associate, Maureen, always laughs at me, because I walk around the bank and I tell everyone, "You have $1,000 in your pocket and you need to spend it." So, we're working. And videos like this, this is infectious. And we feel as a corporation that we can make a difference. And we can make a difference in preparing the kids to be successful, because that's all they need is a chance. And so, we're having a lot of fun with it as we go forward. We're happy to be here tonight because of a team that Maureen Hale was on, that volunteered, one of the teams who volunteered at Dickinson, hit their Grow Up Great Grant Hours, which is hard to say. And because it was our 10th anniversary for the program, we decided this year we would double the grant hours. So, this team that Maureen is a part of was able to raise, there was a three-member team, they were able to raise $9,000 to give to GRPS for early childhood. So, we think that's kind of cool. And I'm going to hand it over to Maureen, because she did all the work.
Thank you, Shawn. I'm really happy to be here, because as Shawn said, this program is such a big impact in our company. But again, what's the most fun about it is being out in the schools. And as Matthew said, we started when he was still teaching about a year ago with this team, and we volunteered over 180 hours in the last 12 months to earn that $9,000. But what we got out of it more than that, which obviously is a big deal for the classrooms and some of the neat things they're going to be able to have, is just really the interaction with all the kids. And it is the highlight of my day, those days I get to go there. And I walk in and kids come running at you, "Miss Maureen," and drag you by the hand, "Read me this story," or "Can you play this game with me," or "Do this?" And that, and I'm here representing my team, Jill Talzma and Lauren Rotewald as well. They were in the video. Same experiences. That's what they love the most, is about really interacting with the kids. You saw some of the photos, you know, we read stories, we play games. We've been on a number of field trips. Jill went to the farm last year, and we've been to the Meyer Gardens. And upcoming here next week, all three classes from Dickinson are going to come down to the bank downtown, see the branch, see the bank, come upstairs. We're going to do a little spending, saving, and sharing with Elmo activity. So, they're never too young to start thinking about those concepts. I did one of those events just last week at Gerald R. Ford with our class there, and the kids are just so interested, and they pay attention, and I'm talking to them, and I'm going, "Does Elmo have enough money?" "No, he needs three more dollars." So, it's a really, really great thing for the kids. And they get to go home with some lessons, they go home with a DVD and some other lessons they can do with their family at home. So, we're really excited about that. And one of the things you saw in the video, an event we did last fall, Dickinson and Gerald R. Ford participated in a big effort that the PNC Grow Up Great Program had, which was to try to set the world record, the Guinness World Record, for the largest number of preschoolers doing a vocabulary lesson all at the same time. So, throughout our footprint and all of our states that we're in, at a certain time in October, we were all doing the same lesson. It was "Mr. Tiger Goes Wild." And so, we're happy to say that we did set the record. There were over 2,800 participants throughout all those footprints. So, I have a couple of certificates here to, I was going to give them to Matthew here, one for Dickinson and one for Gerald R. Ford, so they know that they were part of that world record attempt. So, that was a fun thing we got to do this year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. And just to sum it up, as I said, we do it because it makes a difference. Corporate America today, one of the biggest concerns that we have is the talent issue as we drive forward. And I think we, as a community in Grand Rapids and through the leadership of the school board, and I think many other companies other than PNC, we're looking at and saying, "We all have to invest in this, and we all have to do it, because we have to give these kids a chance. They're all the same." It's just getting them on the right path, and that's what we're having fun doing with it. We also are running two banks in two of the schools, Burton and Alger, where we're running virtual banks. There's a little bit of money there, so don't go in there looking for loose change or anything, but these kids are fun. Maybe someday they'll have my job as the president of the bank to run it. But it's teaching them, it's empowering them, it's building their confidence. And what we give to them in developing those skills, I will tell you, they give back tenfold to our employees with the same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony.
Have one comment or question?
I just, I also wanted to applaud Ms. Hale's leadership on first steps. It's much appreciated.
And I actually realized I jumped forward in our agenda, so I didn't miss the first public comment section. If there's anybody here who did want to give a public comment. And since there is not, we will go to the secretary's report.
Yeah, we have a few things to share with the board. Opportunity support, our after-school programs. This coming Saturday, there's the Annual Collaborative Youth Fair that's going to take place at City High School, 9:30 to 1:30 a.m. The theme for this year is "Loop Our Story." So, it'll be opportunities for students to showcase work, projects, activities from the program. The students' work will be judged, and they'll be given awards, Best of Show, Outstanding Participant, et cetera. There'll also be some singing and dancing performances. Admission is free for anyone who wants to attend, of course, board included. And there will be activities and prizes and other games and entertainment. Also, on May 5th, there's a Sezvi Chavez Cinco de Mayo Celebration. That's going to take place on the 5th at the Grand Public Museum, 11:30 to 1:30. There'll be some I can answer any questions to the best of my ability as to each of the different issues.
Well, I guess I just want to add that it's surprising how you can operate in silos and not be aware of particular crossovers of legislative needs. And I just applaud Grand Rapids Public Schools and the city, how well we partner together and how much we are aligned around many policy issues. So this only serves to strengthen our advocacy efforts.
I give an example, one on our environment and energy. This was, this is part of the city's legislative platform and recommended joint, where it talks about supporting renewable energy and energy optimization programs and supporting a comprehensive and fair statewide recycling program. You know, in many ways, we're already practicing this, or we have the new U.S. Green Building Fellow onboard to assist in the development of our sustainability plan. So really, the work there aligns right with what we're doing. You know, there's some issues around, oh, the urban waters, federal partnership, and the effort to revitalize the Grand River, restoring the rapids. And again, this is an education issue. It's a watershed, it's about teaching for the watershed. And so again, there's a lot of those things that the city had lines up very much with what our overall interests are.
Community block grants, how much our community schools' efforts is supported by community organizations, and how we need to.
Good. You're good.
Yeah, it's really nice that we feel like we're an advocate for what the city needs, and that the city commissioners and administration is advocating for what we need, and we're connected, so it's really nice to see that. And it seems like we're more and more integrated over the last few years, so it's great. Mr. Flores.
I reviewed that document too, and was wondering just about the issue on retirement for teachers and administrators and what our views are on that.
Sure. And that particular position comes out of your legislative platform, and really what we've talked about is that with the state retirement system, we need to make sure that the state is making an appropriate investment in that state retirement system. We've applauded the governor and the legislature for the years for making significant efforts to essentially buy down the debt. It's a very much insolvent system right now, and the state's going to have to put substantial investment. In fact, this current proposed budget puts nearly a billion dollars just to keep that retirement rate at where it is right now and not have the districts incur additional costs. The position also does advocate for further look at what other reforms may be there. You know, right now, we have a hybrid system between defined benefits and defined contributions. There are a couple of different proposals out there looking at what else might be done, possibly even modeling after some of the things that the automakers did. Whether, we haven't taken a formal position on those individual items, but right now, the system is insolvent, and it's not something that, it's going to require some additional reforms. And the cities, they're struggling with a similar issues around retirement, which is why they thought it necessary to support us.
Thank you. So we are voting to support these as our joint.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Support.
All right. Mr. Ross, will you take the role?
Mr. Legrand. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Faub.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
That motion passes eight-zero.
All right, next is our consent agenda grouping. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Works.
Any discussion? Russ?
Mr. Legrand. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Faub.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes eight-zero.
Discussion items, we have none. Next is public comment for any items, agenda or not agenda items. Is there anyone wishing to give public comment this evening? Okay, then we'll move on to superintendent comments.
President Baker, I would just like to thank the board for supporting the staff during my absence. I was out for six weeks, three solid weeks, and my team, my staff, received a lot of support from the board, and I just really appreciate it, so.
Okay. Dr. Flores, can we start with you?
No comment.
Ms. Legrand.
Superintendent, glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Dr. Randles.
Welcome back.
Me too. Wonderful having you back, and you're looking good.
Thank you.
Oh, great.
Mr. Ross?
Nothing, no, no comment.
Welcome back to, Dr. Faub also.
She was just on vacation.
She's actually gone longer than super to the mill.
Well, you could call it.
No comment.
It was, it's very nice having both of you back. So, and your staff, you know, did a good job. We checked it out to make sure.
Thank you.
I'm sure they're happy to have you back.
Yes, I'm sure.
One event that we did not mention during the secretary's report is the Student Advancement Foundation Mind Share is happening on April 29th in the evening, and we won't be meeting again before that, so make sure you put that on there. Please let us know, either Julie or myself or Teresa, because we need to decide whether or not we should buy a table. So if board members want to go to that event, please let us know, and we will accommodate being there. So, and that is a great chance to show our support for the work that Student Advancement Foundation does on our behalf. So we encourage people to be there. Also, there is, Disart is happening, and I know that Laura Lemoore, Maggie Malone, and John Helmold has been advocating for it. On Friday and Saturday, there is the Americans with Disabilities Act plus that is happening at the Disart Hub downtown on Saturday, Friday afternoon and also Saturday afternoon. And this is sponsored by GRPS, and I think it's really important. So we may not think of the Americans with Disabilities Act as having a social movement or civil rights movement attached to it, but any group of people that have rights in this society have had a movement attached to it. And the American with Disabilities Act is one of those, and it's really great, quite, I'm moved by it, because it's also connected to, I think, all of our civil rights movements originate with the civil rights movement for African-Americans in this country, and it's really remarkable to see the connections between those movements. And so it's really great that GRPS is sponsoring it, so make sure that, get a chance to see it and celebrate it. So with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.